All right, good morning everybody. Yat eppen, aale, da nichinallgi do, da isunollsaagi. Uh, di jee ya, uh, Tuesday, uh, September 1st, 2020. Uh, a do, kodo, hanne nihi chekonde il inshikayro shilne. Di dikosnchaga ina hast eitsa da, uh, dikosnalnihi gi. Uh, na kijji do, di jee, uh, kodo town hall meeting di ta'ei, uh, nda'il'i. A do hanne nihi chekonde'il'i. A do, naaltsos do, uh, nihi chekoda alne'egi, uh, kudonijja aschane, nde'il'i inshikayro shilne. So, altsaxi ei kudo sudizen, um, deilne'edol'el. So, nihi xidi do, nihi sudizen, uh, ndahl'i. Do, uh, nihi kaini ni'ne'abat sudilzen. Aniltscho alla aditlelka di jee. A do kodo, aniltscho do, uh, sudizen, uh, da dilni inshikayinxidne'ala'lscho. Jo, uh, uh, aniltscho nihi sudizen hallo. Uh, lalsi ei odla do allleda'lt edan de. Altscho allhidikha di jee. A do hanne, do biga ha, na negi edo, no'wedo'elixni chon. E asa tikwju, uh, ndado, nell. A do ebinacha, alla aditlelka chon, dene'itlin. Jo chon, di dikosnchaga ina hast eitsa da. Bikitje, uh, ndeipah, ndixni. Ebinina, e alla aditlin go, dene'itlin go, ewo da, bi'chrikha. Uh, do e sa, da hallo, bi'chrikha da. Alla, na anthin do, sa be, e, uh, chota'ei bi'chrikha. Do chota'ei nihi nanixi dalha. So, kudo xin sudizen behastidol'el shidi yin gariot e di jenkwa. Inanach'a inlagi bahheh ni'tze. A do chon do, di nashnihi do, ni'tza. Koin, koin, koincun shidi yin gariot. E, a do chon do, nihi kaini ni'ne'abat sudilze. A do naxaltxun, ni'tso'ken inalika. Kodo, nihi keda'dez'ingi naxada'aliya negi e ch'ehela. Jo, chota'ei na'anthin nihi ch'ehda'aliya. Nihi masa nihi tche'ei, nihi nal'e. Nihi mado nihi ye'ah, nihi maya ye'ah, ewo da'ya. Chota'ei, uh, b'ka'ana'cha. Do, uh, kodo, bikitado, in, na negi jo, in na'anthin. Behast e'enikra inshikayro shilne'akon. Uh, da issa'agi shidi yin gara, do chon sudadilzen negi. Bahheh ni'tzen. Inanach'a inlagi do, chon do, di dikosnchaga in. Nihi tsan koincun, e ch'eha. O, dede'sk'ed'a, ne'di me'ido jumbi'ekon dene'acha. Naxa koinla, a ya'akon nikl, ya'akon nikl. E xinen'acha. Chota'ei naxa inlah shidi yin yod'e. A do chon do, uh, nihi tsal'a, do, nese'l indan de negi a'kuijje. Kodo, nihi tsan da'zen negi edo bahheh ni'tzen. Edo bkit'ini do'el. Edo baholi'an do'el. A'kuijje di nashnihi gi tsan koincun. Kodo, e nihi ka'ana'cha, e, uh, ch'eha tabidi nixi, a'kuijje. A do chon do, b'pa'ada'hanne'egi, pesoda'ba'hanne'egi, altscho ba'hanne'egi. Jo, e chota'ei Washington de, e nihi jo, uh, kuda'yila. Chon de, altscho xin, uh, do b'ka'edol'ul'waltan de. Jo, e chon tchuda naschudol'nel, pe'sli chi'edanaschudol'nel. A do lalsi bahajob'a ndaha'st'ha. E do b'ka'adijja, na negi jo, ewo da, e pes'ajcha do'el. Do enanl, eno, do e biga ha, na, kodo, e yinhi kaini ni'ne'ah. Ewo da, b'ka'adijja, da non hi pe'shmanas'andon nihi do, shuna'bel' Vice President, na negi Myron Lizer. Ewo da, e anikib'nat'ani bat sudilzen. Ni'nat'ani, na negi mi pe'shmanas'andchat'na'azlan, benan'ta. Uh, di kaya'to, na'alkiloshig'edada'dez'ingi kaya'to. Uh, benan'ta, dan de negi, a'lscho, ol'tcha'cha da'nat'ani. Ni jee kodo, nizad'ne'ya, kodo nat'ani bat sudilzen a'kuijjen'le. Uh, kilchak'eyaz'aj'and. Edo, kona'das'ata'gin de, a'bat sudilzen a'atsikayinxidne'edokon. Um, ba, ba la'ana da ni'tze shidi yin yod'e. Ebinina, e kodo nihi jo, ba, uh, deni keda di no'chota'ei ya'akon sa'cha dil'e. A do, ne'ei altscho, n'lp'ehazon'a, a do altscho go'nana'ado. Uh, kodo xin, uh, nihi ka'adilwll. Uh, nihi ka'nan'lwa'do, nihi ka'andilwll. Jo, ha'koincun, ebinina, e kodo nihi jo, dede'tin shidi yin yod'e. A do di jee do, naxa ho'agin, di na'anthin negi, e, nihi kaini ni'ne'ah, b'lp'eda'hasen do'el. E binacha, e chon, uh, naschob'bedzil'ode'ikha't'ol'el. Binshka, ha'inchna'dal'ni do'el, dene'acha shidi yin yod'e. Ewo da, e sudizen, e behastid'ol'el.
Difficulties everyone, our apologies. Um, we did the prayer. We also, um, we're beginning to talk about the census. And how, why it's important to do the, uh, census count. And some of you may have received a packet, um, on the door. And with some information. I know we get so many documents every day. And this one here, if it's on your doorknob at your house, that's the census information. You could fill that out and mail it back in. It's got a self, uh, address stamped envelope. So it doesn't cost anything to send it back. Uh, but the quickest way to do it, and if you have internet services, to do it online. And so, uh, we're gonna be doing some of those online videos. Posting it to the, um, social media pages. So you'll know how quick it is and how, um, simple it can be, um, to turn it in. You know, we're at 17.9% as of last week. Arben, what's the new number now? Do we have a new number?
18.2.
All right, so Arben Mitchell says it's 18.2%. So we, we jumped, uh, what, .3%? And we encourage everybody to continue to do that. You know, throughout the state of Arizona, the tribes are at a very low response rate. The two biggest tribe landwise on, in the state of Arizona, Tohono'Onom and Navajo, are around the same percentage. So, we're encouraging tribes to, all the tribes, to self respond to the census. So if you're, um, from another tribe and you're watching this, you know, encourage your, your nation, your people to self respond. Arben will go a little bit more into that. Um, and the agency wide, we'll have that on Thursday. We'll have better numbers on, see who's ahead by then, agency wide, um, throughout the Navajo Nation. So, kodo, e ya, um, education now, um, US Census banal'te. Jo, dene', uh, kono nihi kai, nihi ne'aj'indan, neshigi census dene'adayol'tcha'ya. Jo, e kodo naaltsos, e ya, nde'ini. Da'ralkall, biga holla, naaltsos, uh, a'kwa, lalsi, um, da'znela'wo da. Naaltsos hada dol'e, to'adalha go, e ya, nle' pos'office, chon dol'ni, a do nle' Washington. Xin chon alne'edol'el. Beninagi, e ya, jo di dene'adayol'tcha'anezna, uh, naxa hya'chota'ei benanixi de'ch'el. Do jo, dene', uh, dayol'tcha'oi, e bininada'za'ella. Beso nihi jo, t'undet'agi yak'udonil. Jo, altscho, dene'ixladi'inhaw'tzog'oh chota'ei, uh, benanixi de'ch'el. A do, e binacha, beso t'undet'ha. A do chon, na'ta'ani bonda'i, nixi nihi edo, um, hadas'zog'i, chota'ei, um, handayitzo'ya. Lata'ei nchchar, chota'ei hahaw'tzog'la'el'sa'adal'ya. Jo, hadas'zog'ho nat'ani naxandak'he'i. Chota'ei naxa bonda, uh, ba, ba, ndai nell. So, edo, onchilpe'azon do'el. Lalsi, e ya, chon nle' Washington. Dene'la, naxatas'ata' do'el. Jo, koincun, ebinina, census eg'i, e ya, uh, yinana'ixi dad'ol'ill do naschudonil. Di dene'viki'ap'ka'oh, do lla, chon lla, aj'indan neshigi di naaltsos nde'ini. A do, bich'edokon dad'ol'ill'oda, naxa biga ha. Kodo xin di na, Arben Mitchell ya'hadol'ne. Akon, do, e la, uh, di naaltsos naschuda'yilad, census bich'el. Ebinina, kodo nihi jo'ba'de, ne'iked'oh naaltsos do hedil, hadil, hadadilia. E kodo, census eg'i, di dene'adayol'tcha'egi, e ay'eg'oni yinana'ixi da' dilni il di September bi'ye. Beninagi jo di September, uh, 31st go'ne'ah, be'ah, a. Ebinina, one month eitsi ka. Uh, nihi, na'ixi da' dilni il t'schno'ad'shna'shikayro shilne. Chon, lalsi naxaltxun, lalsi da'istsa, do, uh, naxa atcha'da'halne'. E bich'edad'ol'la'alti, uh, census eg'i, uh, da' dilni il tabid'ohno. Uh, nihi ka'ado'cha, hoshin iteh'navarchin ni'tso'ken inalika. A do, di nashnihi bonda'hu'ilne'ana'ikitje do, di jen'dan, neshun'el. So, uh, di jee, e ya, da'ra naaltscho shich'ekoliya. A do, uh, di, di nashnihi dikosnchaga ina hast eitsa da, bedat'ol'na'egi. E ya, ina hast, e dami'liya jo do, ba'anshla'neznat'in. Do, ashlat'in, do ba'ah hast'ha, tsustid'ye. Do ba'ah tsustid. 9,557, ewo da, e, nle' nashni. Ya'ailni'eh, da'ya. Nle', uh, March, April bi'ye. Do di jee jee, e konel'te'er. Ina hast, e dami'liya'je. Do, ashla'neznat'in, do ba'anshlat'in, tsustid. A do, di bedat'ol'na'egi. Uh, yich'adas'ke'egi, a yat'eh'das'len'egi, e ya, se'pi. Se'pi dami'liya'je. Do ba'ah hast'han'in, do ba'ah alla. Chon nihi kaini ni'ne'ah, uh, yich'adas'ke'edoo, yat'eh'das'len'. So, bahheh, do, e jo, bin da, sudizen, uh, behadas'itze. Jo, e, e sudzen'egi xin, uh, kodo nihi, nihi di yin, uh, naxa'ila. Nihi jo, go, kodo, nihi kaini ni'ne'ah, yich'adas'ke'ed. Akon, oh'at'ei, inshikayro shilne'. Di edo, hat'ei nish'ol. A do, uh, anoltscho chon, uh, altas'od'len'egi, da nichinallgi. Uh, a'kuijje kodo, bonda'hu'ilne', bonda'hu'ilne'. Uh, di chon bahoshne'egi, e ya, t'chag'ij'da, uh, na'as'ad'egi nish'ekoliya'egi, e bahoshne'la. Do, oh'at'ei da, um, akon de. Uh, naaltsos, e chon, nihi jo, chon da'li'i. A la naaltsos, nihi jo, chon da'li'i. Inshikayinxidne'. Ebinina, e kodo, nihi jo'ba'in inshikayd'uh, uh, hanne', uh, oh'hyu. Um, yich'ekon da'li'i. Um. So, Eli, um, go ahead and put that chart up. The chart, okay, here it is. Di, di dana'ya, kubashne, di dana. Ina hast, e, dami'liya'je. Do ba'ah. Ina hast, e, neznat'in. Na'dimi'liya'je do ba'ah, ina hast, e, neznat'in, do ba'ah, na'dimi. Nelt'ei, e chon nihi kaini ni'ne'ah. Uh, di dikosnchaga in, uh, nashnihi, kada, ndaskha'edoo, e, bedat'ol'na. A do, uh, kodo do. Um. So, e, ewo da, e chon, nihi kaini ni'ne'akon. Um. Bedat'ol'na, jo di, uh, nashnihi ya'ailni'eh, da' do di jee. Uh, chota'ei ya, um, bahon ne. So, a do, yich'adas'ke'egi ya, yich'adas'ke'egi. Yat'eh'das'len'egi, e ya. Se'pi dami'liya'je do ba'ah, se'pi dimi' do ba'ah. Ina hast, e, nelt'ei, e ya, yat'eh'da'zni. A do, alla, e ni'tza. Nihi kaini ni'ne'ah, j'ten, uh, di, uh, Monday, da' do di jee. So, altscho, ashla'neznat'in, do ba'ah, t'ch'a, nelt'ei, e chon, nihi kaini ni'ne'ala. Um, uh, bedat'j'ten, di dikosnchaga in, benina. If you look at the chart, ladies and gentlemen, uh, that's the updated numbers from yesterday. We have tested 94,743 people. Uh, within 24 hours, uh, 340 tests have been administered. Negative tests, 8,359. Um, and 160 negative cases within 24 hours. Positive tests, 9,820. And within 24 hours, we have 28 new cases. And if you go to the next chart, Eli, the next chart shows, uh, the map of the Navajo Nation. And the Navajo Nation, um, testing has occurred in many of our communities. Throughout, um, our lands. And if you look at the map, those black dots are the ones that show that those were, um, places where testing occurred throughout the Navajo Nation. You see some off the Navajo Nation, up in Utah area. Um, the light blue, uh, or the turquoise color ones are the planned. And we'll, uh, include the upcoming testing schedule in, in our, uh, social media page today. And you see where all the healthcare, health center, uh, facilities are. Those are the red and purple, um. Crosses throughout the nation, if you want to call that. Um, and then you see the agencies. So this kind of gives you an overview of the testing that has occurred here on the Navajo Nation, trying to reach as many communities as we can here on. trying to reach as many communities as we can here on, on, on the Navajo Nation. And, um, if you can also go to the, um, next slide, um. The next slide shows the progression. We're gonna put a, a line in there soon to show you the, um, the rate, the average rate of what's happening in COVID positive testing results throughout the Navajo Nation. You can see, we've been, um, pretty, uh, low in the positive cases for the past few weeks now. And so Dr. Jim today will talk a little bit about those, um, uh, the reopening plan, you know, we're in, we're still in orange status. There's four colors, there's red, red meaning that's extreme, orange is, uh, mo, uh, a little bit moderate to high. Yellow is caution, but it's still okay. And then green is, you know, um, pretty much no restrictions. We're still into orange though. And if you look at the next, um, um, graph there, it shows the eight service, uh, unit areas. Um, and you can see them all going on a downward trend on for all of the, um, eight service units on the Navajo Nation. That includes Chinlea, Kiyenta, Crown Point, Shiprock, Fort Defiance, Tubus City, Gallup, and Winslow. And so those numbers are coming down. Well, ladies and gentlemen, these are, yes, good news. But I just want to say that we can't let up. I mean, we, we cannot stop what we're doing. And that's wearing masks and, uh, social distancing. And also, uh, washing our hands with soap and water and hand sanitizer usage and staying home as much as we can. Jo di kon bahoshna agi ya, belagana kechay ey ton naaltsos, dabokha agi eya, di naalnegi, jundehi ka ya, ado naaltsos ka deile. Jo kon da nohli ni gi eya konni. Di ha, atisba ha ya jia, hadaszo, ey kee da desi. Ey kon bakha agi eya, di chindli je haahodzo jia. Ey jo chindli do, uh, mini farms, who shkori to do nleu pinyana, da ey klaadzo chindli. So ey hota, ey ya dahalne, naaltsos ka deile, tunne shye junda, uh, tunne shye judei nleu, so chibi to do, uh, cha to da, ado dene haahodzo. Um, sebi ntses kaida, hota ey, aji kee da, tenigi ey ya dahaliya. Crown Point, uh, da Shiprock, Fort Defiance, Tubus City, tunneste zedo, naaljo, jo Gallup zedo. Winslow, jo hota ey kon naaltsos di, uh, dabokha agi ey, alsko ya konni. Di di kon ntschaa gi naast ey itzada. Akon da, ndeshni ta hadainochna, ashwore shkei ro shunae. Di nihi chinkta oni hi ze, ke dastki, o kon lego, tchada do ka, al ya bahoga no, uh, di chere bedto da, i ndaho ka kon. Ado on lego nda, ndakhei go, ashwore, oha, ah, shodaal. Jo di ze baden, ah, ndi, ah, ndi ndeil ka do, ah, ndi benanis deil. Ey beni na, ey ya hadainochni do, di, uh, ado yedgo chaya daalthe. Uh, jo, ha, neya, hastha, kesalal obal lah nza, chaya daalthe. Ado tchala washni hi laabet, cha da, kissi di hand sanitizers, kon dey beni he, eyro shodaal. Ado la do kon nihi keni ne, badahanne. La di hand sanitizers bechay koda liya, la dey glata da, no da bahanne, kon la. Uh, adadze ni, jo kon, o, ey, allaha badaha, ah, bahanne. Nihi, kon, ey nihi laabet, cha da, kissi gi ey bed chodaal, chodaal. Uh, ado nihi keni ne, do, jo ya daalthe. Jo di naalnegi bechay, ey hota, shedeil, shkei ro shunae, ya konni shidaha. Ah, nihi naanis deil, eya akui chen, hota ey, ayaselke dole, kon dene vi ki apka. Do shi nacha koda dil niht, jo ze baden, ze bazlin kon tchada zeey, do naalnehte dole. Akon da, ndeshni, ze baden, so ey beni na, uh, kon nihi joba, deeni ke, ah, ni kuda nihi naanis daal. Ah, akui chen, uh, do nihi, nihaalchin da, jo ya daalthe, ashwore ntsokye, nihna leke, nihi keni. Kodo banda huilna negi, bechay ashwane ndaslen. Uh, do ey beni nacha, ey lpea da hazen dole. Ado kon dohla, uh, nihi keni hi ne, bah joba, hi cheda, tenigi ka ne chahod. Kon, uh, Department of Health, Dr. Jill Jim, do, aja haza, aja ey kon chian da. Di kon beda dolna agi ya, allay haagande, dahastha negi bechay chian, kon da gi. Ya dahaliya hi kee da desi, di ndeil ka gi do, ha deela, ichnatsa, nihi keni ne. Jo hota ey ya ndeil ka. Uh, do, nleu, lpea da sihla, di ndeil ka gi, sa da, naalchin da nleu, posdo da, uh, kon ey ya, ichnatsaga, ndeil ka. Lpea da ha do sihla, da shkei shunae. Ey beni na, haagande, da so tchada bedohne. O, do, la, la ey haagande, nihi naanis deil, oh. Uh, hota nihi ya dahao, uh. Nihin de, uh, lchinna ni, glene da, che na na hui ntsun, nleu, uh, di naal ya bahoga no dey shal. Che, che jinzun, ha ey hotetni. La ta ey ya haagande, ntsun ta, ta beba ahaliya, nleu ba ahaliya, jeetetni, lenda lchinni, glene. Kadei chen, do, 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 da niht eda. Ey beni na, ey hashkei jen hi jo, sadhi jo ya theo. Ey beni na, kodo, lche ya daalthe, hanne, beda huilzahe, ey ka, baho, uh, education. You know, we, we just recently, uh, approved some, uh, legislations. Um, if you can bring that chart up, I know I've been talking about this for mini town hall meetings, right? Some of you are probably tired of hearing about this. But I just want to be transparent for you all to unders, to know and to understand how seven hundred and fourteen million dollars uh, are being utilized here on the Navajo Nation. And we're saying to everyone that we should be helping those that are, um, struggling, right? Those that are struggling, I know everybody's gonna say, I'm struggling, I'm struggling. I mean, I'm talking about folks that are having a difficult time. And many of those are elders. And you heard me say this before, a lot of our elders are there by themselves. And they wonder where their children and their grandchildren are. And you know, it's the family's responsibility first, right? To check up on their grandparents. And now that the winter is set, it's getting colder out there in the, in the evenings and the early mornings. We need to begin to prepare for the winter. And that's what our teaching says, teaching says to prepare for the, uh, the winter. So, the first allocation we received was in May sixth, on May sixth of this year, in the amount of sixty million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. That's when everybody was saying sixty million. The other one, a second allocation, June sixteenth, eighty-six million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents. And that got the total to six hundred and eighty-six plus million. The third allocation came two days later, June eighteenth, in the amount of twenty-seven million two hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. And that all put together is the amount seven hundred and fourteen million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. So, look at the next three lines, those are the resolutions. Uh, resolutions that approved, uh, some of the seven hundred and fourteen million. So CJN forty-seven twenty, we approved that July fourth in the amount of twenty-one million fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. So I know there's people saying that not one penny of the CARES Act has been spent, that's not right. Twenty-one million of this has been encumbered. And that's for food and supplies, personal protection equipment, I'll come back to that in a bit. So you subtract that from seven hundred and fourteen million, gets you down to six hundred, and I'm looking at the column way to the far right, six hundred and ninety-three million one hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and one dollar and thirty-seven cents. The second resolution that was approved on July fourth, twenty twenty, CJN forty-six twenty, forty-one million dollars even. And that's for, you know, hazard pay, and I'll come back to that in a bit. Subtracting that, six hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and one dollar and thirty-seven cents is remaining after the second legislation. The third legislation that we approved, and that's for power line, electricity, and, uh, other items, was done, um, in, in August, August sixteenth, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five million six hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-two, uh, dollars. You subtract that from the remaining balance, one hundred and seventy-six million four hundred and sixty-three dollars, uh, four hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. There was still a little bit over a million dollars left, um, leftover. So, the, the total amount there is at one hundred and seventy-seven million. That's remaining now, that's remaining there. We, we do have a resolution wanting to use, uh, those monies for direct relief for college students, for elders, for those of, of our people that are in need. So if you can go to the next slide, uh, Eli. The next slide, again, you, you've probably seen this before. And it's a breakdown of what those resolutions are. Um, so I, I mentioned in CJN forty-seven twenty, we allocated ten million for water and basics, food distribution for those that are COVID positive and those that are struggling. Uh, computer hardware, two million, bathroom additions, three point five. Those bathroom additions are being, uh, started right now. Uh, healthcare assistance, um, three million, those are the six thirty-eight, uh, facilities uh, that, that we got, we run, Navajo Nation run, or local boards run. Two point five to the office controller to administer that. That's the twenty-one million fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents for CJ, CJN forty-seven twenty. The first, uh, PowerPoint I showed you. The forty-one million is in CJN forty-six twenty, that's the special duty pay for twenty-one million. Some special duty pay was already, um, um, issued out. And, uh, you know, because it got termed special duty, now, there's a lot of people wanting to get special duty. I, I thought hazard pay would have been a better term to use, because if you use hazard pay, that means people that are actually on the front lines, right? Um, but that's just the way it goes. So those are monies that are there for those that work during this time, that, uh, provided essential services. Personal protection equipment, ten million dollars. Those are, uh, as, as stated, you know, for masks, for, uh, things for employees, uh, throughout the Navajo Nation. Auto, uh, safety assurance facility, ten millions, those are, uh, putting plexiglass up in, in some of these buildings. Uh, some are already being done like that. Uh, yesterday, I, I saw some facilities that are building that and have done that, so that's underway right now. So that's forty-one million dollars for CJN forty-six twenty. Now, the bigger package that I was talking about, CJY sixty-seven twenty, if you look at that water projects, one hundred and thirty million, five thousand and ninety-five dollars for water line projects. That's cisterns, that's, um, connecting, um, homes to the, to the water line. Power line projects, forty-four million two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars to connect our, our people to power. You know, keep in mind, we had to vet these projects because we needed to, we need to get these done by, uh, December thirtieth. Of course, there's more needs than one hundred and thirty million plus for water, and there's more needs for forty-four million for a power line. But these are projects that can get done, um, by the deadline. We, we, there is an extension legislation in Congress, but we don't know, you know, if it will even go pass the Congress with what's going on over there. They can't even, uh, make up their mind on a relief package for US citizens right now. So, what makes you think that an extension would be a priority for them, right? Even though we, we want it as a priority. And then, uh, we also have, uh, uh, telecom and broadband, that's, um, cell service and internet access, fifty-three million two hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for telecommunications broadband. Uh, solar projects, thirty-five million one hundred and ninety-two for those that are way out there, uh, that are not close to the power line, let's get them some solar, um, um, solar, uh, facility, uh, projects out there. Auto hardship assistance, one thousand, you know, uh, we're proposing to put more in there, one thousand, just go to one person, right? Um, auto, Parks and Recreation, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That goes to Parks and Rec for the vendors and most likely the tour guides that have been hit hard as well. Payroll support pay, forty-two million one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. That's gonna help support payroll and, uh, rather than using general fund, we use, um, CARES fund so that we can, um, have some additional funds to get some other projects done, um, rather than just all go into payroll, right? Twenty-four million six hundred doll, six hundred thousand went to the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise Board, and those are the, uh, gaming employees, you know, that have struggled. Uh, Navajo Nation employees have received funding for the duration of this emergency declaration. And so the Gaming Enterprise, um, provides economic development and dollars that come into the nation. So, uh, they, uh, did a proposal and we approved that proposal. Judicial branch, nine million six hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three, uh, dollars went to Judicial Branch for their reconfiguration of their courts, their office, and getting prepared for, um, COVID, you know, we're, we're trying to get prepared. And we're also, experts have said that there might be a second wave, and we're, we're praying that it's not gonna happen here on Navajo, if we continue to do what we're doing. Um, it won't happen, but we just gotta continue to wear our masks, social distance, and, um, wash our hands with soap and water. Uh, business assistance, sixty million, uh, JT will talk about that today, that's available. And to our small, medium, and large businesses that have had struggle throughout the, uh, uh, public health emergency. Navajo Department of Health requests seventy-five million, uh, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, and, uh, sixteen dollars, uh, is for, you know, vaccine, getting prepared to, um, get our flu shots, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that flu shots will be available soon. And those that want flu shots can have it, because they said that flu, the flu and, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, together could be very. And those that want flu shots can have it, because they said that flu, the flu and uh COVID nineteen together could be very deadly. And so we want to offer uh flu shots to those that want it um coming this winter. So, and then, since I said there is a hundred and seventy seven million dollars left of the seven hundred and fourteen million. Uh, we, we heard, we got emails, we got people texting and letting us know that people are having a difficult time. And so what we propose is to get some relief to, direct relief into your pockets. Uh, money into your pockets so that you can, you know, get through this tough time, and, and I'm, I'm saying, these are people that are really struggling. That are, you know, like I keep saying, you know, Navajo Nation employees. We got paid, we were paid throughout this duration. And, you know, I would ask that respectfully, these dollars go to those that weren't getting paid, doing those fathers and mothers who worked off the Navajo Nation that decided to stay home, took care of their families. But if you could put that slide up, uh the gray slide, uh Eli, legislation number zero two zero nine dash twenty, that was introduced by uh Keyell and Begay and uh co-sponsored by um Vince James and uh uh Herman Daniels uh and, and others. What we're proposing there is thirty five million dollars for emergency relief and assistance for Navajo Nation, or Navajo College students. Twenty five million for housing initiative, that's housing improvement, also for the former Bennett Frees. To get housing for those that are in multiple generations, and then we do have a list of um applicants that have gone to the housing services for many years, and you know, housing services never gets enough money, but the application process is pretty um, pretty lengthy, and those that are high risk and elderly are the ones that get um uh, those applications move forward, but there's not enough money to bill everybody and get everybody a house, so that's gonna be there to help them, using that process, that list that, the HIP, they call it the HIP, the Housing Improvement Program. Three million dollars to enhance technology services to improve coordinated responses for Navajo Nation employees and students through the Department of Education, as you know. You probably saw that picture of those kids, those students that are outside the school um getting onto wifi. Uh, we, what we wanna do is to offer wifi access, not just to schools or to chapter houses, but to government buildings as well. So that people can, you know, do their homework there and, and turn in their uh information uh to their employer too, or their assignments to their employers. Four point three million for the installation of plexiglass vinyl IT support, purchase of tablet devices and air ventilation for Head Start Centers on the Navajo Nation to protect, to protect staff and students from coronavirus, that's for our most vulnerable uh or, or little children, or Head Start children, to get them um tablets and equipment, you know, I mean, you got money that went to the schools, CARES monies that went to the schools, BIA, BIA, BIE state schools, and they provided laptops to some of their students. And so, but not for Head Start, and Head Start needs some support as well. Five million dollars for the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services to provide hardship assistance for Navajo school-aged children to purchase school supplies, tablet devices, laptops, school clothing, and other financial burdens caused by COVID nineteen pandemic. I know that there was an uproar about the tribal clothing program, right? They were saying, how come I wasn't able to, eligible, you know, these are federal guidelines for that, that wasn't a COVID. Um, that was just every year uh monies that come from the feds. That was announced for student clothing program. And I heard a lot of people start saying, hey, um, I'm a Navajo, I, but my stu, my, my student, my child goes uh off the Navajo Nation schools, and why aren't they accounted, so, you know, putting some money for those individuals to help them, and this, this one here opens it up, it's just not for student clothing, the other one was for student clothing, but this one includes student clothing, but also includes tablets, laptops, and other things, and, and you're gonna have to show that there is a financial burden um in doing these applications. So that's just FYI for everyone. Um, ten million dollars for the Navajo Division of Social Services to provide emergency financial assistance for Navajo vulnerable elders and individuals with disabilities. So the relief may include past due utility bills, rent, mortgages, isolation expenses, and other financial burdens caused by COVID. Five million for the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services to transfer remotely to serve over fifteen thousand clients to avoid exposure of COVID nineteen. Four million dollars for Navajo Nation Shopping Center. Those are small businesses that need relief for tenant and property safety improvements at all ten shopping centers throughout the Navajo Nation, you know, they got hit hard, um and some of them are, are behind on their rent as well. And so uh Navajo Nation Shopping Centers uh support. Fifteen point four million for immediate connectivity and information sharing resources via Verizon Satellite Internet in the proximity of Nat, all one hundred and ten Navajo Nation chapters for families. So that's for one hundred and ten chapters, but we're trying to get it even closer to the communities as we can. Um, seven point four million dollars for propane and natural gas services to homes refill, refilling bottles as COVID nineteen relief services for the upcoming winter season, you know, we try to get uh our elders propane filled so that, you know, they can uh have that through the winter season. Fifteen million for solar projects for households on the Navajo Nation, including the former Bennett Freeze area. Five million to address solid waste disposal that will enhance Navajo community sanitation and mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen. One million for Navajo Nation information technology to procure professional services to oversee broadband telecommunication development to address technology. And that's, like I was saying earlier, for government facilities. I know not, not everybody has a chapter house nearby, but they may have a uh government facility close to their home. So rather than having them have to go to the chapter house or some of these um internet hotspot locations, they could actually go to a government facility and get onto the internet. Six hundred and two thousand two hundred and six dollars for internet connection for our police, our fire, our uh first responders, so that they can do reports, shoot them out right when um they're out there, or rather than go, have to go back to the office and do all that. And sometimes, those of you know, um, reports don't come out pretty quick. So that would help uh get those reports in, uh in a timely fashion. Ten million dollars for the Office of the Controller to promptly administer and manage the Federal CARES Act Fund, self-explain. Six hundred and fifty three thousand to the Office of Management and Budget to assist OOC and other departments to administer the Federal CARES Act Funds. And lastly, uh I guess the kind of the remaining amount is twenty nine point nine million for emergency financial assistance, remember, there was only a thousand that was in the hardship assistance. We wanna put twenty nine point nine million uh into the hardship assistance uh for Navajo members, elders, and individual with underlying health conditions to purchase food, disinfecting uh supplies, um pay bills, past due bills, rent, mortgages, isolation expense, and other financial burdens caused by COVID nineteen. You know, those are individuals who stayed, and there, I've heard stories that a lot of our men who would go off to different cities to work chose to stay home, because their families said, don't go to these hotspots, you may bring it back and infect the family, and uh men and women stayed and took a uh pay cut. And now many of them are struggling, and we wanna help them as well, and we wanna say thank you for some of these dads and moms who sacrificed, you know, to stay home and, and be with their families, I mean, that, that I'm sure has strengthened the family uh in our communities too. Um, so that is uh legislation um zero two zero nine dash twenty, there'll be a co, a link in the comment to tell, to um give you information on if you support this, and we, we, we ask that, I think this is uh comments that came from all over the Navajo Nation, and that's how we proposed this to the council. The legislation is introduced, now let's uh, it, it's upon you, you can't just uh look at leaders, it's about the, the people coming together and letting them know, letting our leaders know what they want. And we ask you to support, email the council delegates, we'll give you the um email addresses to, to them, and also include um a copy to us so we know what's being sent over there, but to support zero two zero nine dash twenty, to get direct relief. And if we are successful, a hundred and seventy seven million uh is approved, then we have, would have spent the entire seven hundred and fourteen million dollars that has come from the federal government and CARES Act, and, I mean, these dollars that I just uh uh mentioned here with uh legislation zero two zero nine dash twenty, pretty confident that those monies will go out um pretty quick, because that will go into the pockets of Navajo people for this um emergency uh pandemic that's happening here on Navajo. And we also respectfully request that you spend those dollars here on Navajo, you know, we're trying to improve our economy, get our economy back going, rather than taking all this money off the nation where others benefit. Because if you use it here, sales tax comes in, we use those sales taxes for other projects in the future. And just imagine if we were just to use all, spend all that money, that thirty, forty, fifty, um, a hundred and seventy seven million here on Navajo, how that could be a good shot in the arm for us here on the Navajo Nation and, and our economy and our uh community. So that's uh it, I know I tend to take a long time, but there's just so much, this is just focusing on CARES Act, there's just so much other stuff that we'd like to share, but this is a COVID nineteen town hall meeting, right? Focusing on COVID nineteen, what's happening, the conditions that are occurring, as well as using the COVID nineteen CARES Act relief funds, because the Navajo public need to know. And they need to know how these dollars are spent. And we're hoping that we can bring trust back to the government uh by keeping you informed, that's why we do these things, it's not about photo ops or being seen, it's about transparency. No, I don't think in, in no, in any time in government that uh Navajo people have been this much informed uh with what's happening in government, and we wanna keep it that way, because we uh, we want you to know that uh Vice President and I are um careful with the dollars that is intended for Navajo people, that, that's why we were voted in. To take care of the people's money, and people get all upset because we veto monies, you know, we veto monies because it may be a project that's not doable, or a project that's uh is wasteful. And we want to be able to get the biggest thing for the buck, for the dollars that we have and that we're gonna use for our Navajo Nation. So I just want to let you all know that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you, sir, uh appreciate it, um, this was uh uh one time where your, your long um dialogue there was beneficial for me, I just got off a phone uh prayer call uh nationally uh with focus on the the Navajo Nation, Arizona, and New Mexico, and uh so looking forward to um, I guess uh hearing uh the, the results from that, and looking for results being expected, so thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it. This is a great time to be with you all on this COVID nineteen update, uh we're gonna have to change the name there because COVID uh is, uh looks like it's, it's, it's going away, so we prayerfully uh pray that, you know, uh everybody's praying, I know at this time, uh we get more spiritual when um problems come, and so in this land, I appreciate um our, our president's uh kind and thoughtful, and all the data that we've been receiving from our health professionals, uh we use it to uh, you know, guide and direct us here, along with the prayers. Not only our own, but uh prayers of the people, uh and just seeking uh godly wisdom and counsel, and um it, it's good. You know, so out of love and respect for the people, we do go forth daily and hourly, led by prayer and led by guidance and uh wisdom that you know, as President said earlier, you know, careful on the dollars of, of the people. You know, I, I know there's been some uh critical comments made in the past, and not wanting to be negative on that, but you know, it really is that, so thank, thank you uh Facebook, social media for the transparency, and that's really what it's about, and so those of you who are watching, I mean, that's what you expect, and so uh we just uh thank uh President and the leadership in our cabinet, and all those doing the work behind the scenes, they don't get much credit. Uh, you know, thank you to Arvin Mitchell doing what he's doing, uh we need everybody counted out there, and so uh one subject to another to another, but they're all very important. You know, as the Vice President, um, uh, many of you know, I, I'm not a, you know, I, I'm not seasoned uh as a government leader, I come from the private sector, uh I look at things a little bit differently, but you know, there are so many different uh things here at the Navajo Nation that leadership needs to be responsible for, uh held accountable to, and uh for the benefit of the people, and you know, again, that, that's what President was saying, and that's why we do what we do. It's for the benefit of, of the people, and so as we can be the, the most transparent, the most prayed up, the most uh, I guess respectful, um, we go about forth uh doing our, our work and whatnot, and so, and I know President did give a long um uh talk on, and all the data and all the legislative stuff and work with council and the CARES Act money, uh you go on and on, I don't wish to, I know we've gotta get to our other presenters here, uh namely Arvin Mitchell, right after me giving us an update on the Census twenty twenty. So I appreciate President here and uh his leadership, uh we continue to um go forward, our numbers have been down month and a half ago, and numbers continue to decline, what does that look like for us? Well, President did say, you know, by Navajo, by local, we continue to press for us on that campaign, uh we also looked for the benefits of that, remind, be mindful that on that campaign. Uh we also look for the benefits of that, remind, be mindful that one percent of uh all that tax revenue generated here on the nation goes to the purchase of emergency and first responder vehicles. You remember recently we did uh unveil seven new uh fire trucks, uh EMT units, brand spanking new and the latest technology and obviously a better performance uh for fighting fires, for responding to emergencies and whatnot. So your purchases all go to that. And so what else can we do as a as a nation to help ourselves? Well, as I said earlier, uh did pray, uh just came off of a prayer call uh for not only the our United States, but also for our Navajo Nation. You know, what does that look like? Well, uh Lord, deliver us from uh COVID nineteen, right? And the the eels and the uh the cares and the worry and the fear of it all. And so we did that. And so we were reminded that we can have revival because of the desperation of our own heart. And I believe that's what this time is for. Our Creator has given us uh uh this uh hour to reflect and to be mindful, to pursue Him and to honor Him. His word says, be still and know that I am God. I am your Creator. And so I was definitely reminded of that, but um also prayerful for other movements and other uh things to uh pray for our nation, you know, economic development. CARES Act money, you know, we're thankful that we have this opportunity to uh not only fight this COVID nineteen pandemic off, but prepare for the next one. So that means, you know, economically, we need to uh uh advocate for industry, for manufacturing to come to the Navajo Nation. We have so much land. We have so much resources. Uh, we need to uh create a a better opportunity for our children and their children. So uh as you do know, we have our Blue Rhino Glove Manufacturing Facility there in Church Rock. Two lines pumping out gloves. I believe uh the sizes are medium and large. And so we have all the medium and large as you could need, but guess what? We don't have small, we don't have extra small, we don't have um uh extra large gloves. And so that's where the phase two of the project comes in. Um, just we got la- la- last week I was there just getting an update and finding out where they're at. And so we're really needing to advocate for the phase two, uh six more lines of glove uh manufacturing uh capability to come online. So we continue to work that. Uh our own nitrile gloves manufactured here on Navajo, the only nitrile gloves manufactured right now in North America. The rest are coming from overseas. And so, you know, what a great opportunity we have. And so uh there are many more opportunities. They have uh manufacturers are looking for places to uh manufacture more masks, more facials, more um PPEs, gowns and 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 whatnot. So definitely, our Navajo Nation is here. We do have uh and entertain uh those opportunities to bring industry here. And what does that look like? We have opportunity zones and so we're having meetings on that. How can we bring manufacturing here? Um, early on, President and I were advocating for our very own um um strategic Navajo stockpile right here on Navajo Nation, right? A large warehouse, uh state of the art to um, you know, house and protect our our gloves, our our PPEs for the next pandemic, right? What what that may look like. And so we need to have our own strategic Navajo stockpile here on our Navajo Nation. And so we're uh making sure that we're given at least those opportunities to field those uh inquiries and questions, answer questions and um maybe someday real soon, we'll have our own warehouse here on Navajo where we have uh not only our own allotment of us uh PPEs, but also maybe house and store PPEs for other uh First Nations across the land here. And so what a great idea. And so we continue to look down those roads economically and manufacturing wise and um just know that as we uh look to bolster our economic development here, that it it's a renewal of our mind. It's a renewal of uh the present natural things around us. Right now, we have lack uh very soon, very soon, we won't have that lack. We'll be uh building, we'll be adding to, we'll be um uh uh enlarging and uh deepening the uh economic and expanding economic uh development here on Navajo. So that's one thing that we we do do uh day in, day out. We're having meetings and and looking for those opportunities. So uh again, I didn't want to take too too much longer. Um I know uh Arvin Mitchell's got uh important updates, talked to Jill Jim. Uh her updates, JT Willie talking about um our our relief efforts for businesses and artisans. So look forward to that there. But just know that the Office of the President, Vice President, uh we have our cabinet here, many fine and willing and very smart people in our cabinet here, continue to work for the benefit of the people. And um I failed to mention uh our Human Resources Director, Dr. Perfilia Fowler. Thank you for your work as well. And uh on and on. I mean, if I leave somebody out, I'm I'm on the danger of offending somebody, but um as I give you all that, I I just wanted to be mindful. Uh last week I was on, as the week before, President was on the Democratic National Convention. And the Vice President was on the Republican National Convention. There was a piece in my speech that was left out, which I wanted to read to you uh for the sake of four hundred and twenty words I was held to. And uh this is very powerful though. Um and I wanted to people to know the heart of the Vice President and the heart of the of the President Jonathan Nez. Uh, this is the portion that was left out because of uh the size and the time I was given, but it says, "And lastly, the Navajo Nation is led by a Democratic President and a Vice President who shares with many Republicans similar values and an unmovable faith in Jesus Christ. President Jonathan Nez and I are Navajos who not only share our Christian faith, we share our love for our people, Christian and non, and despite our individual party affiliations, work together for the good of our people." And so I just wanted many to know that. Uh not many know that that was what I had provision for in my speech. And again, because of size and and time limits uh was left out, but it didn't mean that it shouldn't be read and whatnot. So I'll continue to use that and make sure that everybody knows that that was uh what was to be uh I guess read and heard across the land because that's something that our nation needs right now is that return to uh a heart, not only for God, but a heart for our people, to consider those more highly than ourselves, is which is uh one of the greatest commandments, right? To love our neighbor as ourself. And the second, the first greatest commandment is to love our Creator, our God, with all our mind, with all our heart and with all our soul. And so I just want to leave that with you, to chew on it, to pray about it. And uh if, you know, how many of our hearts across the nation are not at that point, then prayerfully, that's where we pray for our nation and our people to be touched, to be moved by the heart of God. And as we return to Him, that uh He'll hold no good thing back from us. And so healing across the land, economic development across the land, jobs, economic prosperity, uh bringing our First Nations people into the American dream. And that's really the heart of this Vice President here this morning. It was good to be with you this morning and uh thank you, Mr. President. And uh now we uh ladies and gentlemen, introduce you to Arvin Mitchell, the Executive Director for the two thousand twenty uh Census. So Arvin, thank you for all your data. Yeah, take it away.
Thank you, Vice President. Also, thank you, President. Twenty twenty census. We started this journey back in twenty eighteen. It uh yeah, Navajo Nation had a consultation meeting with the Bureau of Census. So from twenty eighteen, we're now to the last month of our twenty twenty census. September thirtieth is asked to do your self-response or to be counted. October thirty first. So we only got thirty days today. We only got thirty days. Although as a Navajo Nation self-response, we're only at eighteen point two percent. Whether you send it back by internet. Eighteen point two percent since we started um the census back in June. June, uh da, June to August the tenth. We left questionnaires. Because of COVID nineteen. Uh, in the day, September thirtieth, uh non-response follow-up. Uh, on the. Uh, on the President's office. Uh, on the. Uh, the President, Problem Nation. Navajo Nation, September as a census month. Uh, on the. Uh, on the enterprise. With the. Imagine if we all come together as tribal employees, eight thousand plus all the enterprises, we can add another five thousand to it. So if we have fifteen thousand that can just do help two families with their questionnaire, we could easily do thirty thousand. So. We only got thirty days, so we we have to we have to do this. Uh, on the. Uh, snaggy, eighteen point two, three point seven, uh uh internet. Fourteen point five, uh yeah, uh uh self-respect, I mean, mail. Uh, on the agency. Uh, President. So let's have an agency. Let's have a friendly competition. Agency as a uh uh as of August the thirtieth, which was Sunday. Uh, Fort Defiance Agency was twenty one point five percent. Remember, uh Navajo Nation as a whole is eighteen point two. So Fort Defiance is twenty one point five. Although Chin Lee Agency, fifteen point three. Although the Western Agency, eighteen point one. Although on the Eastern Agency, eighteen point five. Although Northern Agency, eighteen point one. Uh, on the uh Lego, uh thirty, we have thirty eight tracks within Navajo Census track. Uh, yeah, twenty eight point eight percent. You're almost at thirty percent. Uh, on the uh uh Tubusiri, uh twenty six percent. Tubusiri, uh twenty six percent. Uh, on the. Twenty five point five percent. Although twenty three point four percent. Uh, on the, this area has been doing good the last couple of weeks. Uh, three weeks ago, they were, they were probably uh up to thirty eight tracks, probably in the lower half of of that track. Although New Mexico, uh yeah, twenty one point nine. Although twenty one point six. Twenty one point two, Mexican Springs, Fort Defiance Crystal, uh on the New Mexico side. Uh, on the twenty one point one, St. Michael's. Say, uh Sawmill, Radley, Fort Defiance Crystal on the Arizona side. Although twenty point eight, uh uh Crown Point, Little Water, although on the uh Lake Valley. Twenty point seven, uh uh Rocks Springs, Church Rock, Pinedale. Although in the uh Young Beto, twenty point seven. Uh, on the um but I want to mention the bottom five, but let me go ahead and mention the bottom five. So there there's five areas that really need to pick up their their response rate. Uh, twelve percent at um. Although thirteen point two percent. Uh, yeah, Sealy, Wheatfields, Round Rock. But in this area has been picking up for the last couple of weeks. They were only in the single, single digit and they're at thirteen point two. Uh, on the Kayahta and Ojito, thirteen point three. Although Chin Lee Mini Farms, Rough Rock, thirteen point nine. Then the Hotsa and Shinbito, fourteen point five. Uh, on Lego, uh uh Mobile Questionnaire Assistance Centers sites. Uh, on September, yeah. So this Tuesday, today, uh we're at Shiprock. Uh, the Kayahta, uh the Coine Canyon. Uh, on the over at Gallup Community uh Pantry. Uh, at the State of New Mexico, uh Governor's Office, although the President's Office wanted wanted us to uh set up there. Uh, on Wednesday. Uh, Gallup Community Pantry. Thursday, uh Chin Lee Camera, uh the Forest Sleep. Friday, uh Shiprock, uh the Torian, uh the Mini Farms. Saturday, uh yeah, Winter Rock True Value Store. Uh, on the. Uh, uh Census Questionnaire. Uh, the questionnaire. Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah. Uh, uh, the computer. You can still set your your questionnaire uh on your smartphone. Uh, on the Friday, yeah, that's the President, the I X S, uh the Census, they did a roadblock over at Crown Point. Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, uh, yeah. Uh, on Thursday, uh yeah, Shiprock. Uh, on the. Uh, on the, as as viewers out there, you need to spread the word that we need to um a self-response. There's probably your neighbors, your relatives that haven't submitted their their uh their packet yet. There's probably your neighbors, your relatives, that haven't submitted their, their, uh, their packet yet. Although, xin, nat ani, kreta, eh, digi, eh, bekha, toli. Inide, eh, de, shnig, oh, yeah. Let's say that there's ten thousand Navajos that, if they just do one or two questionnaire, you know, we have eight thousand out there. As a total workforce, eh, we have eighty nine thousand, eighty nine thousand. So nine, ahytzi. Because we're gonna be short thirty one days. Eh, Lego, although, chido. We'll have a possibility of not finishing. Eh, kutsa, go, eh, chit, edo li. Eh, benina, eh, kaaxa, elkaedichak. Although ndak, kades, September first. Although, na, xin, eh, eh, ni, masan, ni, cheda, eh, eh, na, aha, kingo, nda, aya. Although ndak, pasas, go, da, don, koo, eh, eh, bishnda, hot, aha, di, de, Census questionnaire. Eh, de, ya, kodon, nan, choxka, toli, choxa, abana, shnet, toli, manza, aholjij. Although ndak, kodon, na, ani, zu, eh, bish, eh, ya, kodon, le, de, chapter, dan, nil, da. Ado, xin, eh, nat, ani, da, holenolto. Ako, anksa, go, eh, eh, ya, ni, cha, ha, zeh, toli, chit, chod, chini, shle. Although, xin, basis, xin, ki, aha, ani, da, shetche. Although, kaha, na, na, chidet, eh, ni, toli, kodon, eh, Mr. Willy, da, zba, na, ba, na, aholjij, gi, da, kaha, na.
Oh, ah, kaha, uh, Mr. Mitchell, although, Arnold, go, she, kido, she, kaya, zinayate. Uh, alhena, although, she, eh, ya, uh, although, ne, shnigi, eh, chapa, eh, enshenot, cha, chini, eh, basis, chin. Ashi, eh, de, she, chiroki, aha, ani, da, shenala, although, she, eh, ya, di, Division of Economic Development, uh, Division Director, eh, sali, ay, although, eh, ya, kaha, ndsah, go, do, ba, eh, kain, sendi, konda. To all of our, our, our viewers this morning, uh, good morning, although, uh, thank you very much for tuning in today. So as we, um, go forward here, I'm gonna go over the presentation for the Division of Economic Development's, um, expenditure plan for the sixty million dollars that is going to our Navajo businesses, as well as our Navajo entrepreneurs, the artisans throughout the Navajo Nation, on the reservation and off reservation. I'm gonna be bringing up a couple of slides here that will, uh, share some vital information moving forward. We've been hosting quite a number of, um, webinars on our social media. And, um, if you need to keep up to date with that, just reach out to our, our, um, website, www.navoeconomy.org. But as I bring up the screen here, I'm gonna share with you the, um, contact information for the Division of Economic Development. So as we, um, as I talked to you this morning about the, um, Navajo Nation Careers Funds for Businesses and Artisans. Here's some important information that will, you can resource, uh, moving forward. So as you can see here, our contacts for this, um, uh, expenditure plan, and as well as for the program itself. Uh, Mr. Douglas Capitan, Mr. Kobe Tom, Ms. Shania Manis, and also myself. Um, you can reach us at our central office here in Saint Michael's, area code nine two eight, eight seven one, six five four four. Our email, navoeconomy@navajo-nsn.gov. And of course, on our website here, www.navoeconomy.org. All of our regional business development offices can also be located at these phone numbers. These phone numbers here list all of our locations throughout the Navajo Nation. Our Eastern RBDO, which is located out in Church Rock, their phone number, five oh five, nine zero five, six four zero zero. Our Fort Defiance Regional Office, nine two eight, eight seven one, six four eight six. Our Chinli Regional Business Development Office, nine two eight, six seven four, two two four zero. And our Western Office out in Tubusiri, nine two eight, two eight, three, three zero one zero. Although, eh, our Shiprock location is gonna be five oh five, three six eight, one three one five. And as we move forward here, we're gonna be talking about the expenditure for the Navajo Care's Act for Businesses and Artisans Relief Grant. As it was mentioned yesterday, the Division of Economic Development is ready to move forward to accept applications for both programs that are set up to provide economic assistance for individuals and businesses, artisans, sole entrepreneurs, LLCs, corporations, um, who are facing a financial hardship through this time. And September seventh will be the date that we're gonna start accepting applications. But before we get there, I wanna go through what is on the screen here. So our step one process is, uh, that if you may be eligible for the Navajo Care's Act Business or Artist Relief Grant. In order to, um, apply for the program, you have to go through a two-step process. Um, the first step is to register your business with the Navajo Business Regulatory Department. And, um, you must be registered with the Business Regulatory Department in order to continue to step two. And as you can see on the screen here, there are a series of steps to take as we move forward. And of course, this is the step one process that we've been doing up to this point. We have about a hundred and, hundred and twelve new applicants that have come in and have cleared the first process. And of course, you, we have our, our businesses already resourced on the list right now, who are already, um, who are already recognized through the Navajo Nation, therefore, they're waiting on the application to go live on September seventh to ta, to start applying for the grant program. Our first process includes the Navajo Business Certification Application, which can be found online at navoeconomy.org. We're gonna need some information such as your CIB, your EIN, or your census number, that you're gonna put into the document. You may also attach your CIB, um, for justification purposes. Um, a list of past projects, past projects again is defined as, um, projects. If you're a Navajo business, such as a, um, stock contractor at a rodeo, you probably provided your services for previous rodeos in the past. And that's where you would indicate those, we don't need anything detailed, probably more than, not, nothing more than five past projects. There is a form that's also, um, easy fillable for you to put those information into when you submit it to the division. Um, some organization information, if you're a sole proprietor, you're just gonna put, you know, self-owned business. You don't need to be as detailed, but if you have employees that work under your business, then you would include them in that area for organization. Our tax commission, there is a form that has to be submitted, a Navajo Tax Commission Tax Form one hundred. There is also a tax form two hundred, depending on the location of your business, um, here on the Navajo Nation. And of course, those tax documents are found on our website, but you can also resource them on tax.navajo-nsn.gov. Thereafter, we go, we take you through the procurement process for the application. So when you get to step number six, you've already completed ninety percent of your application. And this turnaround timeframe is about a seventy-two hour timeframe, and then you get issued your certification number. We have been issuing numbers out since we've announced the program. About a hundred plus individuals already have a new number. So when they, when they get their issued number from the business certification, they can apply for the, um, grant program. Now, the reason behind this particular, uh, process for step one is that as a business, as an entrepreneur, as a artisan of the Navajo Nation, it's a way for us to resource and to clarify any justifications for how much these monies will be paid out to individuals. And because of the dollar amounts, and also again, by guidelines by the Treasury, and those set forth by the Navajo Nation, we're just adhering to ensure that as the administrators of this program, we are, are crossing our, our, um, all areas off to, for verification purposes in order for us to deem our applicants eligible for the program. Our step two process is then when you can apply for the Care's Funds. So that application will go live on September seventh. Um, we did a run-through of the app, application live online yesterday on our webinar, and that can be located on the division's Facebook. Um, we also have some tutorial videos that are located there that can assist in the application process. Again, um, the application can be found live, um, online at navoeconomy.org. Or you can call us at nine two eight, eight seven one, six five four four, for that information and to assist you with the grant application. So the first, um, grant program that we have set up is to provide assistance to businesses facing financial hardship because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So if you're a business, and when I say business, a lot of individuals misinterpret the word business. Anyone is a business who provides a good or service, and you receive a payment for that good or service. So if you were, again, I'll go back to referring to, um, you are a silversmith, and then you get so much income per year, and it provides a service for you, a, a product to an individual. And this year, you don't have that avenue to provide that business. Um, you do, you are fina, facing financial hardship, so therefore, you get deemed qualified for the program to receive some funds to suffice for a lot of those missing, uh, revenues coming in this year to meet your needs. A lot of the general eligibility, as you see on the screen here, has to deal with businesses facing hardship due to the pub, to the, due to the public health emergency for COVID nineteen. Um, you must be fifty-one percent owned, uh, by a Navajo, so you have to provide your census number in the application process. Your business was operating prior to January first, twenty twenty, um, because of justification purposes to compare the business's operations from previous years to this year. And of course, um, have a business of less than three hundred employees as of March first. And of course, when I just went through just earlier, the certification process for the Navajo Nation can be found at navoeconomy.org. This is the certification number that you need to enter into for your application. The applicants for this program are eligible to receive funds up to ten thousand dollars, and of course, ranging to sixty thousand dollars per business with a demonstrated need. So up to ten thousand dollars, um, you will be asked certain questions as far as what financial hardships you are facing. Anything outside of that, beyond ten thousand, up to sixty thousand, you will be, be, be asked to provide additional information, what your business should have already in place, such as tax information, um, such as your DANS number, any additional information in order to request for the more amount of funds that you are facing hardships for this year. And of course, as I mentioned prior to, it is very important to complete your part one process of the application before we can move you on to part two to apply for the Care's Act Funds, which is going live next week on September seventh. So the applications, we will work with you one-on-one to assist you. We have technical representatives available to, to help in, in regards to the application process. Again, as I mentioned earlier, and as you see on the screen here, it's a eight-step process to get your certification number, which is done within a seventy-two hour timeframe. Everyone must apply for this part one to be classified on the Navajo Nation as a business, whether you are an artist, whether you are an individual sole proprietor. We've had applicants come in with diverse backgrounds of businesses that have been classified already. We have an individual that applied for the, for this part one, and the individual cleared through all the process. And the individual that provides business is a burrito seller. So this individual cleared through the process, has received their certification number. We classify them as a caterer because they provide food, and so therefore, they're able to apply for the part two process once that application goes live. So as we move forward here, it's, this is the part two process that we're gonna talk about next, which is the grant application. So the grant application starts, starts again with you getting your certification number in part one. You get issued your number, and then you input that into the grant application, which will be available at navoeconomy.org. There's already a section dedicated to this area. It's not live just yet because September seventh is the day we plan to release the application for the Care's Fund application moving forward. Um, number four, you're gonna fill out and provide any documentation, and also self-certify yourself as a business owner. And all the questions that will get asked to deem the hardship determination for your business that you are facing a financial hardship during this time. And the step five, the grant application process is reviewed, and then thereafter, an award decision is made, and then we refer that back to you. All of the payments in this process is done through a check payment by mail, so therefore, checks will be mailed out to you once your application is approved, and you accept the application has been approved moving forward. Um, so just some real quick, um, FAQ questions for you. Again, the most important part is who is eligible, any business is eligible, eh, within a pro, for-profit business, and that is one fifty-one percent owned by an enrolled member of the Navajo Nation. You necessarily do not have to be located on the Navajo Nation. If you are a sole proprietor located off reservation, such as Phoenix, wherever, Gallup, and you are a business owner, and you are an enrolled member of the Navajo Nation, you are eligible to apply for the program. So as we move forward here, I'm gonna talk about the Artisans Grant. The Artisans Grant is open to any artist that is facing a financial hardship through this time. Now, artisans is defined openly as an individual in any sort of area when it comes to a medium or discipline in art or performance. So if you're a artisan, such as that, that sells at the local flea market as a vendor, you are classified as an artist. If you are a performing artist, such as a singer, a comedian, a dance group, a, uh, performance group, a singing group, and you can deem and classify your organization as an artist, then you can qualify. It's open to anyone over the age eighteen. Again, the very most important part is that you must be certified through the Business Regulatory Department. So as we move forward here, we can assist you in getting, um, certified through the Navajo Nation in order to apply for these funds. Uh, artisans, again, must demonstrate a sustained commitment to their work, their career, and public audience for their art. Artisans, again, must be classified as fa, facing a financial hardship because many of the avenues to do performance arts or display art have been disturbed at this time. We have the, uh, the cancellation of the Navajo Nation Fairs throughout the, throughout the Navajo Nation. A lot of the county fairs have canceled, state fairs. So therefore, there's no place to sell or produce your goods or make, uh, financial, um, meet your needs financially through those avenues. So therefore, you are facing a financial hardship and can apply for the program. Um, if you are an artist that generates a higher amount in revenue dollars, we will recommend that you apply for the Small Business Grant because the, the fund expenditure in this area is up to five thousand dollars for individuals facing a financial need. So it's up to five thousand dollars per artist, a vendor in a park, an individual that sells beside the road at a road stand, um, you're eligible to apply for this program. But after reviewing and assessing your business, if we feel that you can qualify for the higher program, we will recommend that you apply as a small business, of course, we will assist you with the process. So the application process is similar to the small business one. You go through and you fill out the application, you must get your certification number, and then thereafter, you go through the same process, one through eight, to get your certified number. You need this number in order to put it into your application for the Care's Funds. After you get to the Care's Funds, which goes live on September seventh, you're gonna input that number there, and then thereafter, fill out the rest of your application, and then you can start, um, going through the review process for your Care's Act application. And then the, the award determination will be made, and we will be granting the awards for individuals. So just to go back again, the Division of Economic Development, our contact individuals, Mr. Douglas Capitan, Mr. Kobe Tom, Ms. Shania Manis, and myself. Our phone number can be found at nine two eight, eight seven one, six five four four. Our email, navoeconomy@navajo-nsn.gov. And most importantly, our website, www.navoeconomy.org. All of our regional offices located throughout the Navajo Nation. Our Eastern Fort Defiance, Chinli, Western and Shiprock, we have individuals there that can also assist with the application process for both part one and part two. So as we move forward here, we are, um, very thankful to our leadership in guiding us in this expenditure plan. We are very thankful to the Navajo Nation Council for approving our expenditure plan moving forward. And we're looking forward to, um, bring these assistance for direct relief to individuals. It's estimated that about ninety-seven percent tech, of this funds will be going directly to businesses and to artisans. Each one is a case-by-case basis, we understand each individual has a unique need. So therefore, it is an our, our, um, mission within the division to ensure that we're able to determine each application as it comes through, once it reaches the audit firm that will be doing the review process, and then thereafter, um, looking for favorable outcomes for awards to our businesses, to our entrepreneurs, sole proprietors, LLCs, corporations, and artisans. Um, we've had a few questions, many questions come in as to, you know, I'm not a business, I'm only so-and-so. But we were able to classify quite a few people through the process because what they do as an individual brings revenue and a livelihood, it brings a financial income for them. So therefore, they are deemed a business, whether they're a sole proprietor, meaning, meaning that it's just them themselves that performs, um, art, or them themselves that provides a good or service. For example, you have some farmers, farmers is a great example. And so maybe some farmers decided to not plant this year, and they're, they're, they had an income prior year, and this year they don't have the income. They can justify that financial need because they're facing a financial hardship because of the current pandemic has affected them. You know, they decided to not plant this year, so therefore, they have no produce to sell. And you have other individuals such as um uh food stand uh individuals who sell at food stands at the local flea markets. You know, there's no place to sell right now. And so if you're not making any revenue to meet your needs as a business owner, then you do classify a financial need through the process. Again, we're here to offer our assistance. We've been pretty much on the go every day, uh reaching out and then receiving feedback from individuals. We're very thankful with all of our collaborative parties that we've been working with to help get this expenditure plan finalized and to have it before you hear today. So and auto hehhe and chago uh nchanda and nishigi. They're very, they're a very good team that have been very um wonderful in making this process simple for us so that we're able to get it finalized and ready to go. So as of um this coming week, we will be going live with the application for the CARES Fund. If you need to reach out, please feel free to do so. Ashi t'a qurenche ha sidoh, ay si hehhe and chago. From myself, you know, being a business owner, being an artist myself, uh I know how much hardship you can go through as a business, especially when it's just you. So therefore, this program was developed to provide that need and to be able to meet those individuals um halfway. You know, a lot of this is, has to do with a lot of implementations for yourselves to fill out the applications. It can be a little overloading, but that's why we're here. And we're here to help justify you through the process in order to get an application process and approved. So a qureshi, auto hehhe and chago. I'm going to turn it over to um Shitsui, uh Dr. Fowler. I'm sorry, Dr. Jim.
Thank you, Dangki, hehhe. I think a lot of the information you shared should be helpful for the listeners out there. I know the Division of Economic Development has a webpage, so hopefully, if you've missed this information, you can get that from their webpage, but. Um saying, Dr. Joe Jimmy, nskedoh, look on, so, kachini, boshes, chendo, eshing, tashetse, do. Ozo fone, dasanela, a do, na dis, onda, ay, sinosso. Odo di, kwa di, ni thoh, nengi, ay, CARES Act dollars, ba ya'tki, ki, do, ba hane, ki, ay, kwa di. Under the Navajo Department of Health, ay, kwa di. Beso do, ni ke, ni ke, jehu, liado, kwa, ni ta' do, luba ta' na di. De kosin, sa'gi, nas, nas, ay, t'ada, di, ay, beso, gi, ay. Ten, ten million dollars, ay, kwa, t'yaon, da, da, t'ani, do. Di um, b'khat'ah, nez, ge, gi. A sa'at, zeno, da, do, um, a do, a, t'fo. Hawa'na, da, um, b'khat'ah, nez, ge, go. E, wot'a, case manager, jehu, lieni, gi, um, b'fnday, nes, o. Se, xares, dan, lani. Akwata, um, t'yaon, si, wot'a, t'odadi, il, do. Kwa di, in, da, a do, delk'as, da, si. Do, do, beho, zinda, di, ati, de kosin, sa'gi. Nas, ay, t'ada, khon, ati, la, nhe, da, de. La, nhe, de, ne'epa, da, de, na, do, b'f. Kwa di, ay, um, kwa di. Um, ban, su, de, kes, o, shinde. Do, kwa di, beso, do, di, kwa, three million dollars. Ay, kwa di, tribal health organizations, d'any, hospitals. Ay, to the city, do, Uta Navajo Healthcare System. Toato Medical Center, Windsor Indian Healthcare Center. A do, Pine Hill Health Center. Um, Keny Cito Health Center in Alamo. Ay, kwa, um, ay, da, beso, the. Um, kwa di, la, ba, bed, a do, kwa di. Um, ez, ez, eni, dan, lani, si, kwa. B'ka' do, luba ta' t'ado, kwa di. Um, de kosin, sa'gi, nas, nas, ay, t'ada, kwa di, yin, dan, lisi, itto. A do, la, bikin, na, beso, bikin, da, nani, gi, do, ay. Ten million dollars for PPEs, na, na. Esi, kwa di, in, he, chi, do, in, he, ze, b'da, da, da, s'wale, do, da, t'ani. Disposable masks, da, da, t'ani, do, um, face shields, da, da, t'ani. B'kha' nhe, de, na, you, ta'nda, de, shnisto, kwa di. Di um, businesses, d'any, ay, kwa di, under the Navajo Nation reopening. Twenty-five percent of max occupancy, si, kwa. Um, di, on, d'ya, di. Different places like Navajo Original Craft, da, da, t'ani. A do, kwa, alt'ka, si, ha, ha, si. On, da, do, b'ne, k'ade, do, h'te, edan, de. Ba'as, da, 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 di, ne, ho, shinde, ya. A do, chapter houses, de, da, t'ani, si, do. Um, on, d'ya, on, d'ya, si, itto. Ay, kwa, ten million dollars for PPEs. A do, um. Nas, go, ay, kwa, isolation, h'lieni, itto. Ay, kwa di, ati, ay, um, t'ode, ndi, kwa, Chinley, the Chinley Community Center, do, kwa di. Chinley, um, Best Western Hotel, ay, non-congregate. Um, isolation, h'li, geto. Um, the one at Chinley Community Center, ay, congregant, um, isolation, h'li, get. Esi, to, ati, um, kwa, nhe, de, ne, um, ha, shi, kwa di. Um, da, di, flu, ati, ho, ho, di, na, ba'as, da, da, di, ne, to, di, de kosin, sa'gi, kwa di. Ez, e, b'ch'ad, den, itto. Esi, kwa di, ba'as, da, da, di, ne, to, do, ay, kwa, shi. Isolation, h'li, ni, kwa, um. Kwa di, manage, na, di, ne, to, so. Ay, do, kwa, be, testing, do, kwa, la, beso, in, do, la, basan, da, do, vaccines, da, da, t'ani. A do, emergency medical services, do, ay, do. Um, the equipment, updating their equipment to assist in the response, itto. A do, consultants and contractors, do, kwa di. Um, nas, ne, ndelk'agib, h'lieni, itto. Esi, ni ka'da, che, ho, do. Elt'iso, kwa di, beso. Um, kwa, basan, da, itto, do, kwa di, nyamason, don, he, t'is, on, senior sentences. Then, ta'dihi, itto. Delk'at, do, tabi, la, ta', do, kwa di, um. T'yaon, de, hawan, de, ba, deliver, da, om, do, pick up, a, de, om, shi, de, ya. Ay, do, kwa, do, text program, h'lieni, si, do, kwa di, beso, basan, da, do. Ay, kon, soho, kwa di, o, beh, des, si, heh, non, gedin, ni, do. Kwa di, ill, ni, ani, da, is, no, t'agi, kwa di. Um, alt'ho, heh, heh, and gedin, ni, do, do, di. Um, di, um, de kosin, sa'gi, do, um. Do, ay, you, da, um, de ne'epa, da, de, na, gi. Ah, si, wot'a, ni, z'no, ay, kwa di. Ati, a, kwa di, curfew, si. Um, nine AM to five AM, a, kui, ch'ado. A do, weekend, so, kwa, non, thirty-two hour lockdown, na, h'ni, do. Da'at, on, da, ke, go, do, a. Um, ba'at, ah, no, sin, a, ta', ta'ha, liya, do. A, ta', ta'ha, no, z'no, kwa di. Um, hi, la, ati, kon, da, ke, so, kwa di, a, elt'ho, and, da, ke, go. Don, he, chi, don, he, ze, da, 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 s'wale, on, da, ke. A do, ni, h'wan, de, um, la, an, kha'il, de, a, da. Do, khon, ta, ba, kwa, ta, ba, lani, gi. Ay, kwa, a, bi, la, kwa di, um, b'chi, to, b'ze, ta, da, s'wale, hawan. Um, a do, ay, yesi, khon, a, ke, go, nde, ba'at, ah, no, sin. Um, a do, a do, kwa di, non, first of the month, h'lieni, do. Kwa di, nyamason, don, he, t'is, on. A, da, da, t'ani, nyamadon, he, ze, da, t'ani, ke, go, ta, de, shi. Ba'at, ah, liya, kwa di, ban, su, da, ke, so, b'f, b'f, on, da, ke. Ba'at, ah, no, sin, kwa di, kwa, kui, si, si, ta, na, al, de, ta, non, di, kui. A, kui, ch'ya, kwa, um, hand sanitizer, ka, da, ta, ha, lo, ke, de. Ay, da, kwa di, um, ba, ba, um. Son, da, si, in, ho, do, kwa, um, have it available for them. A, kwa di, si, de. Everyday prevention, si, de, elt'iso, beh, des. A, beans, ba'aj, ha, sti, to, ha, ed, nek, et, do. De ne'epa, za, de, shi, h'li, ya. Um, just, um, bela, ga, nek, et, shek, ata, da, shi, to, kwa di, elt'iso, kwa di. Um, na, n'ch'ini, si, kwa di, ba, ba, ha, des. So thank you for those that are listening um this afternoon. I just wanted to do a quick reminder and education as we're beginning to approach the first of the month and just welcoming all the listeners this afternoon. And just ensuring that um the pandemic is still here. COVID-19 has not gone away. There's no treatment, there's no cure for it. So just continue to um do prevention every day, and hopefully, these are out and about in the, in the businesses and very soon, or may have already been distributed. Just a reminder to wear a mask or a face mask every day. Maintain six feet of physical distancing, washing your hands with soap and water for twenty seconds, and clean and distance that try touch surface areas as well. Also, continue to wear your mask to stop the spread, um especially in public places as you, as people are beginning to assist elders this weekend for first of the month starting today. So just ensuring that there are um topics that I've covered before around um cashless interactions or going to the gas station. And those are um some, they have some high-touch surface areas. So just ensure that you um are able to wash your hands or hand sanitize your hand. Also, ensuring that you're staying within six feet from others. Um, those are very important, no matter where you're at, in the grocery store, in the post office. And then making sure your mask looks snugly and comfortable over your mouth and nose. Masks should be secured with ties as well. Um, also, um, you can have multiple layers of fabric as well. Avoiding um touching the mask is very important, making sure um when you do put them on that your hands are clean. Also, wash your hands after removing and all. And also, wear, wear only one face mask a day, um if it's fabric, and also make sure you wash um after use and then dry mask without damaging shape as well. So you're at risk for COVID-19. If you don't have your mask at all on, as you see in the top slide there, and then you have medium risk of one wears a mask, and they have low risk if both individuals wear a mask, but you're a very low risk if you um are apart six feet from distance. Also, face masks for employees are very um important, especially if the Navajo Nation is coming back um to begin to um work. And so we've been, I think, around two weeks of the reopening. So make sure that you properly wear your mask in the workplace. Also, that you wear a mask correctly for max, maximum protection. Wash your hands before putting on your mask. Put it over your nose and secure it with your chin, fit snugly against the sides of your face. And do not put the mask around your neck or on your forehead, and don't touch the mask. If you do, wash your hands or um use hand sanitizer to disinfect. Also, how to clean? You can um use a bleach solution, and there's an example of the bleach solution here that you can um use for five tablespoons per gallon of um room temperature water. You can soak it in um the bleach solution for five minutes and rinse thoroughly, and also use one mask per day, as I mentioned. Or als, also, you can also wash in the regular um washing machine as well with the warmest appropriate water setting. So and then drying, you can line dry or you can um put it in the dryer as well. So as we all have been wearing um face masks, it's very important to also take care of the face mask as well. I know that a lot of donations have come through the Navajo Nation. I know for mine, I had to repair the straps um as they will um be overused and have to be replaced at some point. Just as a general reminder, always um wash your hands for twenty seconds. But within those twenty seconds, I think sometimes there is really tiny steps to making sure that you wash your hands, um that you wet your hands with water appropriately. Also, apply enough soap to cover all your hands, and also rub hands together and scrub everywhere. So make sure that you um clean in between your hands. Um, you can always wash your thumbs, the center of your palms over your hands and, and your um part of your wrists as well, and in between your nails. So that takes time, so it's not really um a quick um hand washing that you um you possibly might have done before. But now with COVID, I mean, it's very important that you get everything done and cleaned for twenty seconds, and then you rinse your hands with water completely, and then also completely dry your hands as well. So there's no more of that five-second hand washing that you might see. But for yourself and your protection when you're out and about, especially this weekend, and I hope that you also help translate some of this information to grandma and grandpa or mom and dad as well, if they're a lot older. Um, then what does asymptomatic mean? So there are symptomatic and asymptomatic um discussions that usually happen with COVID-19. But for, in COVID-19, asymptomatic means that um you are not presenting those symptoms of the disease. So people are showing mild or no symptoms, and they could potentially be carriers who get, who will have the potential of getting others sick. And also, if someone is suspected of being around someone that's asymptomatic, you would need to self-quarantine for ten days. And also, um, symptoms will appear between two to fourteen days after exposure. So use these facts to keep your elders, your family, and your community safe from COVID-19. Also, remember, the best way to becoming infected is to practice social distancing and wear a mask when out in public. But I also would like to say indoors too. Especially at work, and also places that you um don't consider regular household members, I would say. Wear an indoor, indoor mask. And as we are going into the fall season, um these symptoms are similarly to respiratory diseases. So at the beginning, that's why we named COVID-19 the Kosin Toggi nineteen for those reasons. So just as a gentle reminder, when someone has COVID, they will eventually recover. And when they do recover, they can be around everyone else again. So um, so there are some timelines related to that. So and those are, if you think or know that you had COVID-19 and had symptoms, you can be around others outside um within your household or outside your household at least ten days since symptoms first appeared. Because you might have been in isolation or quarantine or quarantine all this time. So to be around others, you would, it would be at least ten days since symptoms first appeared. At least twenty hours since last fever without use of fever, reducing medication, and symptoms have improved. And also, if you test a positive and have no symptoms, and you would be around others, ten days have passed since tests, and then you continue to have no symptoms. But for anyone who has been around a person with COVID-19, it's important to quarantine for fourteen days after exposure based on the time it takes to develop the illness. So the time factor really varies. So in the previous slide, you saw that two to fourteen days is when it takes for someone to get sick. So just ensure that if you are a close contact, meaning you were around possibly someone that had um COVID-19 with fifteen minutes um or more, and within six feet, but we usually say three feet, that you are considered a close contact. And the reason why we also talk about um asymptomatic individuals and also when to be around individuals in the population for the Navajo Nation, at least close to half of the cases are individuals ages between eighteen and forty-four. So as I mentioned, more individuals um could be not feeling sick, but they can infect others because they might have less symptoms or, or no symptoms and mild symptoms that you can't see. So um by doing so with not knowing that they have COVID-19, if they don't understand that they've been exposed and they are around and about in the community, they have the potential to transmit COVID-19 without really knowing it. So know where you go, know who you visit. It's very important. You have the power to protect yourself and your friends and your family. So together, we can um stop the spread. Also, schools are back in session as I know that kids are getting materials picked up and dropped off in locations. Um, since some areas are mostly doing virtual learning, so there is some communication with the school setting. So there are some tips that we have to stay safe. So if you are sick or you have been exposed to COVID-19, um you should not be picking up supplies. You should send someone else that is not sick to help pick up supplies for your kids. Maintain a six-feet um distance from others when you're at the school picking up materials, wear a face mask. Bring your own pen to sign documents respectively, discourage handshakes, clean and disinfect all items. Wash your hands with soap and water and also if you don't have that available, then use a hand sanitizer. And now that we're working and back in our regular duties for most of us, either at home, I mean, you can still take these practices anywhere you're at. If you've started working back within a private business, protect yourself and others in the workplace by staying home when you are sick. And right now, some of these symptoms may emulate or be similar to other areas, like some people might think it's allergies or some people might have the stomach flu. Some people might have, really, they might have COVID or other reasons for being sick. So just know when you are sick, you should stay home, especially if you are showing symptoms. Monitor your health and do a journal log if you have to, if you are experiencing fevers because physicians or doctors will likely ask if you've possibly monitored your symptoms. Wear a face covering, cloth face covering at all times when you're at work. Practice social distancing, especially in shared spaces as much as you can, but when it is not possible, your first defense is to wear a mask at all times and to also wash your hands with soap and water often. So cover your cough and sneezes as well and also avoid sharing objects and equipment. And if you do share objects and equipment, make sure that you sanitize them after each use and also disinfect them on a regular basis. But always have, if you, if possible, have a hand sanitizer on hand with you to make sure that you clean your hands often before even putting food in your mouth or at your desk of eating your lunch, even though that, that could be one thing, one precaution we have to take is just making sure that you wash your hands. And then also avoiding having visitors at the workplace too. There are visitor interactions that can be prolonged or either very short. So find safe places and safe spaces for visitors to interact with. If all possible, you can make sure that you arrange for a phone call instead of an in-person visit. So there are ways to still prevent COVID-19 by not necessarily meeting in person. There are technologies that we have capable capabilities. We have the telephonic ways of communicating or you can use virtual meetings. I mean, a lot of people are probably using either Webex, GoToMeet, Zoom or other means of telecommun, I guess, communicating virtually. So just know that those are some recommendations to reduce your risk to exposure. And this slide is always just as a reminder that the Navajo Nation Executive Branch does have a worksite safety guidelines that is provided to the employees to follow steps to stay safety and protect yourself and also other employees. And there's also a safety presentation or PowerPoint that's included and also the safe mask wearing is also included on that webpage as well. But as always, as we want to enforce disinfectant safety as well, and early on, there were reports of people injecting bleach or Lysol or other products to associate that with treatment for COVID-19 and that's not really the case. So do not drink or inject any of these products I mentioned. Make sure you read the label. Do not use hand sanitizer that contains methanol, a substance that can be toxic. Make sure you follow label instructions. Do not mix chemicals. Store them out of reach of children and also call the poison helpline if you do feel like you someone in your household might have injected it. And so that number is one eight hundred two 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 two, one two two two. So just as a reminder, and public health messaging is very important that we continue to be vigilant. Even though our numbers appear to be staying below fifty, we all need to still practice social distancing and also birthday parties. Birthday partners, birthday parties, excuse me, are still considered as outbreaks in some of our service units. And also individuals traveling off the reservation, but we've been seeing some cases where there are outbreaks due to birthday parties. So just know if individuals that you are gathering with are not in your household, you really have to take extreme caution and treat everyone like they have COVID. You do not, you have no control over where anyone goes. You do not know where they have been when they come to your birthday party or whatever party you have. But we strongly discourage birthday parties because our public health order states that there shouldn't be more than five people in any kind of public gathering. So those rules are still applicable. There should not be any flea markets, roadside markets or any food sales as well. Those are still continued. So until we adjust or modify any of these public health orders this month. But as we continue to stay vigilant, I hope that we continue to keep the numbers low and do our job to protect ourselves, others and the nation. So thank you. And I would like to introduce Dr. Fowler. She's the X R Director with the Navajo Nation. Thank you very much.
Y'all know that they don't know you have to keep it. Shouldn't that question that's a yo kizi? Uh, thank you to all the listeners that had just tuned in. My name is Kofelia Fowler. I'm the Division Director for Human Resources. And first and foremost, again, acknowledging all our Navajo Nation personnel, all the listeners out there, we thank you for abiding by a lot of our executive orders that we have put in place from here. I can't hear you need all the she kiddo should not answer we saw it just came to came not many. I'll see no sound quarter on each another. It's only me. Eh, quarter by here needs. I don't have seen no law eh, quite enough money in the land. I don't eh, don't buy here needs. Okay, with what, with what we have right now with the gradual reopening, will you? Oh, I can't find out eh, I shouldn't talk about that. She knows. Okay, I'd eh, yeah, it's not the art and then I'd then not have caught. We're now a little bit over eighty percent of our Navajo Nation employees back at work full time. We do have some that are continuing to telecommute. And a lot of those telecommuting employees, they go through their immediate supervisors, managers and directors. So we appreciate their our employees working with their respective managers and program supervisors. We also do continue to evaluate a lot of the P P Es within our employees. Uh, we do have our Navajo Occupational Safety and Administration that are going around continuously monitoring various programs. And this week and the next week, they're, they're looking, we're looking at having them be in the Tuba City and Chinley area. So they'll be making their rounds, doing their assessment on the personnel, making sure that you are properly wearing your mask in the workplace, uh, that you are keeping social distancing and reevaluating the office configuration, making sure that your office and desks are six feet apart from one another. And we do have some offices that are taking temperatures when you start to work and then when you leave from work. And I shouldn't talk about that. Eh, yeah, the quite that eh, she eh, did a cheat or is it that the days fall in after he became here in ancient era should not. I don't have seen so good eh, yeah, come not only not the car where you need to have seen so good on hand that the she that the but the car. I don't have seen so good eh, yeah, did he need to the um, uh, sweet thing that the new home here now, I'll call him eh, don't have seen so good, he not nice. Good night, um, I'm glad that I was on the I don't know, she had been in the house, she's so good, not nice. Not nice, she don't know, and she's a good night, and he call him eh, don't have seen so good, come here, come to the car and let okay, eh, I do give a pass a lot of you eh, didn't get cheat on you need to the days, Bali, that's a, I need you can hold it, but I'm gonna need you hot, I'm not hard to ask you eh, I did. Oh, and I'll do, okay, did you know? Did I let the, the, I need she ain't late. Um, uh, uh, Tuba City, though, I don't change the bit, I had to, I just see I can't not that I don't let citations, eh, the other letter, she kiddo should not eh, on the page, I don't let. You know, they're really making sure that we are wearing the appropriate P P Es. And eh, I don't want to hear not funny, not funny, baby, I'm not gonna end up in this, good night, it's a lot, they not funny, I just I be cut out, didn't he eh, quite didn't I, and she eh, do you know, I had a, I have a, I did a, but no, oh, I just don't have a, not kill, oh, but he no. I don't under our department of personal management eh, I shouldn't say the flexible works get a little bit. I don't telecommuting policy eh, don't have seen so good, eh, the, I need I don't need eh, yeah, come to COVID leave, they're not any eh, procedure, hey, eh, I know, hey, I be kidding, eh, don't I shouldn't talk about it, can I, that's so. I don't hear not funny, I'm gonna, I don't know, it's a curfew eh, I do, I, I not eh, I can't know, I'm not, so eh, I don't, he's not a, he had to, I'm gonna, okay. I don't lay in the, I need to, I, 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 curfew remains um, nine P M to five A M in the morning. I don't lay the more, don't lay the more, be scared, eh, I, I, I'm the, I'm thinking of that, that, eh, the car. Okay, I'm the, I shouldn't know, eh, I'm not gonna, I need to, I, I, here to have a nice. Eh, she eh, did eh, bah, uh, uh, okay, eh, he's bad, I don't let. Aro dinno haagoo, uh, ha jo ba da ha shnaa, shlo shikado shidnaa. Di contact tracing wiliyani di, isel ijen daa ka hi. Aji nikikidezii do ye gondaa ka hota. Do, do a saa bethno a tae daa hotchon haagoo, ntsunia ke bethi kihui laa nsaagoo. E kihui ne, kihuna ha sohne. Da ahi laa kaidolni, shida da da no, a e ye gondaa ka. E shi illo kudo bikahonolni, shikado shidnaa. Um, at this time, I want to share a document. Uh, I know Dr. Jim went over a couple of them earlier. And here's a document. These are called our Division of Human Resource Guides. In each division, they do have a guide, process, procedures, contact information, and so forth. And if you just go and click on this, and this is available on our website. If you click on this area here, it goes straight to what that Dr. Jim was sharing earlier, is Work Site, Work Site Safety Guidelines, dechna. Ha shin tukoyen naan tchinni, aro e di yen naan tchinni di, hota daaini shi do di kuaa. Hota ilhaa, uh, ilhaa daa kaidada no. And if you click on some of these facilities, e ro aha naa na teshla, temperature check, itan hitihi. Bithkhanas schedule, tsunata da da no. If you click on some of these, it'll kinda just kinda stroll down. You have your social distancing of employees required six feet apart, hygiene, prevention, and cleaning, kanau, shka ha dosana, e da. Auto custodial services, those are some of the things that, um, that you can also read upon. And this is available, and it goes on down the line. O da tiiye, gud, um, jutulugoshnaa laa ya, I really apologize. Uh, shaka aha nish teshla, naa shtila hotihi itehle, kudo yo ha cha ko, di tsa oyo jutulugoshnaa decha ba. I'm sorry for that. Oko aro alternative work schedule dechna, ha shine naa e di alternative work schedule nikiaha hallo. Oko e di jilnishi gunea aashani hota bethka zaaha, nini gi. E a ta kuaa tabakka. And if you want to print it, you are more than welcome to print it. Aro a e betho e naa na kudjo, kudjo naa gi, e reopening plan dechna. So with the reopening plan, uh, which was back on August 17th. Di kuaa be bethazend, shikado shidnaa, di chichi aro oyo jutsu, do ye jutsu. Aro do tlish, oko di do tlish gunea e bikchi i ka, oko kad e ha shin tukodi ye goshichi belisi kai, oko di ya etza. Oko jutsu naa e bikchi daanadi ka, jo okon de. Ha jo e di numbers, um, ya ha yintehi tabetel ka hi. E ha jo, um, da ni lido na ilka do isel linni, jo e a siye taamni. Aji daan nishi, che do isel linni, nshli da, chala. Um, di di isel linni, isel naika da da lini, e aji, um, ye, ye taamni. Do yibethahazend, do nikiae do ha shine naa na kananishi betsisnaa di do nikitkhanasenda. Jo e isel linni gi bahsala. And if you go into, go further down into the reopening, we have the gating criteria dechna bethgana keta. E, e, they have the testing, the hospitals, e aha naa na teshla. Oko di, um, um, be ehozani do naa bakka. So if you go, uh, further down again, this is pretty much the reopening piece. Aro naa konnaigi, um, shap, shapbe, naa dechni gi, e ya. The other document that's attached is our, um, resource, ona or shlela. And it's our, our resource page, and that resource is here. And in, in, under our division, which is myself as a director, here's my phone number. We have Department of Personnel Management, we have Staff Development. We also have Department of Workforce, and understand that a lot, most, all these programs are in this division. They are open with limited services. You know, they should be able to answer any phones that are ringing, respond to emails, because I do make it uh, make sure that they attend to these phone calls and emails in a timely manner. O di tsa odo ne di tinoi, shjushishichonha kon na, aro ilan ya oda di tsa jota naa tikidita shikado shidnaa. And then we have Department Retirement Services. We also have Office of Labor Relation. We have our Navajo Nation TV and Film. We have Vital Records. And then we have our Navajo Occupational Safety and Health. We have our Department of Child Support, and then we have our Office Background Investigation. Understand that we do have our Office of Background Investigation that was closed for maybe a good two weeks. And they are now back into full service, so please, um, if you need any information, they are available there today. So this much I've shared, but if you click on some of the resources, you go straight to OBI. Right, right there, it'll take you to their website. E aji hota kuaa bethka shov, kuaala bethka zaala uho do le. E di kuaa tsa sii a de, it's, um, shahachika tsa, aro ndahune. Oko hotetni. So there, if you click on some of those, it goes straight to their website. Oko aha tukot e kudo ben kihnaa sasnetole. Aro ha shin tukodi, do kusnaan nihii, bedi, nini e do do, um, aki naan nii, shikado shidnaa. Aki naan nii. Oko di, um, naan nihii e aki isee baaten, shikado shidnaa. E na ye gobe daa kholian. There is no vaccine at this time. But we are continuously monitoring when there's gonna be a vaccine. And you know, our next steps from not only here with the nation, but our surrounding areas, jo e ha shin tukon naa ka. Aro naasko naa nijae ya, we ask that you prepare for winter. Ha shin tukon ndahani ka, shi naa tahui shi. Oko e ho, iyu go naa nish tahano, atashi kaido shidnaa. Shidanaa kietoho, wandan dal naa debay, wandan naa llo shiba, aha ya jo oyu go hon. Nikihne nishitkhanale okon de. E yesa be naan tchindo, shado be shi ya ho a, be naasihii e ho wado. Ho wansala ro e ha shin tukonikinaan tchinhono. Aro nikiza do, ye gobe ndaho, laa ro be yalchitnaa, shina be ndanah tchinni. E shin aani ye gobe, uh, ha shin tuko shahod do, do, do ta di tsa daanahalen de. Jo aki shi uho laa okon de, e a le a, sisi de, nosa shida. Be bikchi ya, jiltchi o, ilha da nishite naa laa ni ya daa ho a. Okon de hota naan tchinni, hotenii shito le, ilha e shi a nikhi ama ni tlini, at, inna da da ni tlini, at e jut da da ni tlini, ama ya jut. Jo e nikihin bahsala. Aro, um, da naa lini, ilha a hota, aji do nikhi do naa bahsala. Oko be e hilkha ane jo be, e hilkha i, che do be nda ahi ni tchino shet, ha shin tukobe lei di kadon zago. Be inna ni, e ro jo e ni tun. O, iyu naan tchinni, e teshikado shidnaa. Ha shin tukon lei de, ndaan tchinni, ka nene. E katala kudehbe deilni, do be desbe dasilni. Le hota kude di tsa, naasni shodo di tsa, bikhanisha do, e dido di ni goko kuaa. Naan nish nikilaketa hasiya da, a be ni lsoitaa i kudo, be edilwylta di ni, oko. A de nikideya shika, e ro shidnaa. O shi, a, na, 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 inna di shi ye gobe, daa daa hliya. Aro ilkisa do, i, a, a hota, e daan hisa, a, a ni naasdeleha. A i shi jillene, shado, hota bo, oh, naa le, shala. Oko e shi aal dechni daan le naa shtuidosani, ye gobe be daa kholian, shalchina. Shi ya shi shi aue da da nishite no. Ha shi kebe, daa ha shi ke ye gobe, kebe nda ahi sinni, masne, kad e kuaa. Oyo asthana kha da nishite no, shao yo do nikhi, oko daa tae daa okon de. Do naas do e yitato, naas do e ha shin tukon nikhi tsodizemhono. Tsunaa a nikhi ni, tsa tae ya shikado shidnaa. Aro a akui chi e ha shin tukodi do kusnaan nii. A, alson ye naan tchine, sha do ye naan tchinni. E shi be bethsa do, odi li, a do naas go be naan ni tchindole. So to end with that, every day we improve. We encounter different things, we encounter challenges. But our elders told us, life isn't easy. You're gonna always come across challenges. It's gotta be entirely up to you to overcome these obstacles. Jo e ye kuda a be so, a bi ni kaho i. So every day we improve to the best of our ability, shikado shidnaa. Oko aha tukot e aha nish shihende beha naa na si, o le, aro ha shin tukobe so ba hui. E beso e do beni na saa treche, ni ta, shite no be shi ya ho a, shdo. Beso wiliyani e naa hotleli ol ya, shi ya shi shi aue. Beso wiliyani do sadoya at ehi be bi jiltchi da. Beni na e e naa hotleli itehla, ha na do no da. Shinajriyoll i, inna e ya, aji e bahastchi ol. E na niza ba aha liya, ha jo ya lchi. Da daa deetni de, shikado shidnaa e shi on shoh. Ben kihnaa sasnetole, aro a de daa lini nikhi do kiaha mitskaga. A shi ini shada kujitna jut e be ya shi nde. Aji shi illo shahod di ol ya di a hihne da da no, itkhanada hohlne. Bethgana jo hastio e shaha oyo taakodo naa ni shi jo a, a ni tae llo. Ha shine naa a ni tae laa taanli, be daan tchite no, shtanro be hiya daa ho a. Okon de itahui a, nikhi tsvado oho a, shikado shidnaa. Kon tukot e nikha naa na si, o le, a chi shi cheen ha naa na si, o le. And at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Doreen McCall. Thank you, Doreen. Ika ha.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler, and, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Doreen McCall. I'm the Navajo Nation Attorney General, and I oversee the, uh, Department of Justice here in Winderock. And my office is also tasked with facilitating donations to the, uh, Navajo Nation under our Health Command uh, Center as well as our Department of Emergency Management. So I just have a brief update on Navajo Nation donations to share with you. Um, as you may know, uh, since March 11th, the Navajo Nation's been in a state of emergency. An emergency was declared for the Navajo Nation by our Commission on Emergency Management. And since that time, there's been an outpouring of support to the Navajo Nation. Initially from our Navajo Nation Enterprises, but over the past several months, we've had an outpouring of support and donations from across the country and throughout the world, really. And, uh, we appreciate all the individuals and groups, the businesses and organizations that have made, uh, such generous donations to the Navajo Nation to help our people here. And the Navajo Nation continues to accept both, uh, non-monetary and monetary, uh, donations, both medical and non-medical donations. And we have a website that was established early on during the pandemic. It's just navajo.fund. Uh, and that website was recently updated. It includes a list of both medical and community needs. And there's also a mailing address for, uh, donated items as well as contact information if you want to speak to a donation volunteer here at Department of Justice. If you have questions that require special attention, we are happy to help you. Uh, but regarding the non-monetary, uh, donation, this includes the donated food items, uh, water, masks, sanitizer, pet food, cleaning supplies, uh, paper products, uh, et cetera. Uh, those donations that have come in have been distributed throughout the Navajo Nation, including all 110 chapters. And regarding masks, as you know, the Navajo Nation, since April, has required, uh, masks in public through Public Health Emergency Order. And so we've also, um, distributed at those community events masks, including special events for elders and veterans where we provided masks. Uh, since June, uh, masks have been made available to the Navajo Nation public. And you can request a mask from the Department of Economic Development, uh, Mr. JT Willie who spoke earlier. And the website to request a mask is www.nncovidprevention.com. Again, that's nncovidprevention.com. You can get on that website and request those masks, and those will be shipped to you. And just an update regarding monetary donations. Uh, our office, as well as the Office of the Controller, provides a weekly update and report to the Budget and Finance Committee on donation efforts. And so the last report I have here from the Controller's Office is dated August 20th. And it shows the total monetary donations at, uh, just over $7.9 million. And that amount does not include, um, two donations from our enterprises, NHA, as well as NAPI, uh, both in the amounts of a million dollars apiece. Um, I know since this report was repaired, prepared, we've also had a half a million dollar donation that just came in from the Tides Foundation. And, um, as well as other donations that come through the Office of the President or come directly here to Department of Justice. And we forward those to the Office of the Controller. Um, but you know, one I saw recently that I thought was really cute was there was a donation from an 11-year-old girl uh, from California who hosted a fundraising event. And from her event, she donated, um, her, her fund, her funding to the Navajo Nation. And so we get, you know, funding from, you know, 11-year-olds all the way up to, um, you know, big foundations and groups. And so we certainly appreciate, uh, those efforts. Again, the website is navajo.fund. There's a payment link on there for online donations. And I just want to share that since March, in anticipation of these donations that were coming to the Navajo Nation after we received the initial donations from both NHA and NAPI, uh, the leadership passed, uh, legislation CMA 08-20. And under tribal law, the Navajo Nation cannot spend donated funds or property with an estimated value in excess of $1,000 until that donation is both accepted by the president and concurred by the NABI committee. And so what this resolution did was authorize the Speaker to act on behalf of NABI for donations, uh, so that it didn't have to go through the full process, uh, and, and the time that's, uh, needed for that. And then in July, another legislation, CMA 0820, was, uh, passed, and that established the COVID-19 Response, uh, Donation Fund. And so that establishes the fund, it designate all, designates that all financial donations to the Navajo Nation that are not restricted go into that fund. And restricted funds, and these are things, for example, we've had donors who want to donate specifically to burial assistance or specifically to children in care, or specifically to uh, veterans or public safety. And so those, those funds that are restricted by the donor, um, under the legislation are deposited into the accounts of those specific departments or programs. But for the ones that are unrestricted, the Navajo Nation has to, uh, determine how it's gonna be spent. Uh, it goes into this fund, and then the expenditures are prioritized by the Department of Emergency Management for, um, COVID-19 relief, including preparedness, emergent, emergency response, and recovery. Uh, those funds in that, donation funds don't lapse, and they expire when all the donations have been expended. And importantly, the legislation also establishes that the uh, donation fund is managed and administered pursuant to a fund management plan. And so this fund management plan has been drafted and reviewed. It is currently awaiting, uh, legislation. It requires both um, approval of the Budget and Finance Committee as well as, um, has to be recommended by the uh, Health and Education and Human Services Committee. But the requirements of the fund management plan are that the expenditures can only be used for COVID-19 relief. It also requires both myself as Attorney General and the Controller to report quarterly, uh, to the Council on Donations. And then also it requires Department of Emergency Management on a quarterly basis to report on expenditures. And importantly, uh, it requires that the donation fund be audited on an annual basis. So those are the legislations related to the Navajo Nation donation and the donation fund. Um, so what Department of Emergency Management will do, will budget and expend the funds consistent with the legislation and the plan. And just for everybody's, um, knowledge, the Department of Emergency Management serves as the man, the Emergency Management Authority for the Navajo Nation. And they are charged, uh, to provide emergency management services on a 24-hour basis throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, they coordinate and direct emergency management services, uh, during declared emergencies, among other things. And so between, uh, the Emergency Management Department, which has that expertise, as well as our public health expertise, uh, those, uh, funds will be used to address, uh, COVID-19 response, particularly in preparation for the winter months that are coming up here. So that's the update I have for you today. I appreciate, um, you listening to the, all the reports today. And I just want to again thank all of the donors for supporting the Navajo Nation. A reminder that you can request masks at nncovidprevention.com. And then just one final reminder, uh, to complete the 2020 census. Thank you. Ika ha.